... of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a review and justice for all.
Okay. About a roll call, Jared.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Julius Marky-Kugel.
President.
Mr. Harley?
Here.
Dr. McComby?
Here.
Dr. Rig?
Here.
Dr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Steve? Mr. Schroth?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming this evening. I do not have a board president's message this evening, but I would like to let everybody know that one of our colleagues is a little under the weather and we wish him get well soon. Is there any public comment?
No, sir.
No public comment? IAEA, Ashley, oh, boy, I've got a good echo tonight.
I had it under control, but I just missed it.
SGA?
You're getting better.
And Stuka. We have a report tonight.
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Schroth. I have a short report prepared today about a brief summary of some events that have occurred at IHS. The IHS student of the month for January was Delia Solser. The February student of the month was Johnny Trevaro. And Delia and Johnny will be in the running for a new car from Colonial Motors among students of the month from high schools across Indiana County. The musical Footloose is being held this week, and the shows will be this Thursday, Friday, this Thursday and Friday at seven, and Saturday at one and 7:00 P.M. The annual IHS mini-thon held by Leadership Seminar will be held in the new gym on Thursday, March 21st, from 6:00 P.M. until midnight. This event raises money to support pediatric cancer, and board members are most welcome to attend all or part of mini-thon. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, superintendent's report, Ron.
Yes, sir, thank you. I just have some celebrations as well.
And the next one.
Ron touched on a few, but I'm happy to announce that our girls' basketball team is in the state playoffs, and they upset the number-one seed, so things are looking good for them. They have a rematch against McKees Corp. Wednesday night at 7:00 P.M. at Gateway, which is in Monroeville, so hope everybody can turn out for that. On the line...
That's on, that'll be on the radio, right?
Yes, it will. If you miss it, if you're not able to make it, it will be on WDAV, 100.3 FM and AM 1450. Mr. Superintendent, if I may bring up a little incident matter, the game will not be streamed on the WTDAV YouTube page, Random Media page, because of PIAA and NFHS restricting the video broadcast of that game. We want to bring that to everyone, but we are unable to on the video format. And we apologize, but we also want to say that this is a good opportunity, that if you don't like what just happened, please contact your state representative or State Representative Jim Struzi, who is putting together the Fair Play Broadcasting Act.
Thank you, Josh.
Josh.
Yes.
The hockey team is also in a playoff game Wednesday night. Unfortunately, they're competing times at Robert Morris against Chertiers Valley. They're in the semifinals of that process, so good luck to them. Swimming and diving start their PIAA run on Thursday, and with just having set six whipping records, they're the favorites to bring home the gold this year, so we're excited about that. And speaking of winning, junior at Indiana High School, Nico Fennella, took home the bronze, the recent PIAA wrestling tournament, so just wanted to take a second. Oh, no, and that's not it. Ronald Lee already.
Yeah.
Oh, Ronald.
Disappeared.
Ronald has also, Ronald and Claire Stem both were named first chair at the district orchestra.
Right. And I went like that to him, because I have it right here on Facebook. I said, "A nonsense," and he said, "No."
He didn't want to get offended, but to put, this is incredible, what this is, is that's basically seventeen counties.
First chair for what?
For, he plays the first violin.
He plays violin, and she plays the cello, but she's amazing as well.
Unbelievable. She's unbelievable. This is the first time anyone can remember us winning two first chairs at her.
I mean, it is two, it's on stage.
And Ronald also got some recognition as concert master. I don't know what that means, but I...
That means he's in charge.
But it sounds very important, and so I wanted to, Ronald recognized it.
He was talking to me.
Ronald was also the concert master, which I believe is a, is like, he is, yeah, he gets high honors for the whole orchestra, which is tremendous. So all of this just kind of encompasses the fact that our extracurricular activities here are very, very strong.
And important.
And he's majoring in material science.
Yep.
But not wood.
So he also plays violin.
You don't like that?
First chair.
Well, I mean, from my personal perspective, I love it, but if you're that good of a violin player, it's like...
Amazing.
That's amazing.
So kudos to all those people and to the volunteers and coaches who give their time, effort, and blood, sweat, and tears to help these kids. Coaching, when you do it right, is like pennies an hour. So it's really a service that you give of yourself. It's not, no one gets into coaching for the money at the high school level. So I always want to publicly thank all those people who go above and beyond for our kids. And then the last thing is, just to piggyback on what Ron said about the student of the year, it is now time for the nominations for the educator of the year, war two. So if you know of an outstanding educator in this district or any district in Indiana County, you can nominate them. If you go on the Chamber of Commerce website, you can see a place where you can nominate that educator, that special educator that made a difference in the lives of children, and they also will be in the running for a new car if they are chosen out of the entire county. And once again, thank you to Mr. Spatafor and his group at Colonial Motors for making that happen for our educators and our children, because it's a big deal. One last thing is, we also got some recognition. I shared this with the board members, but I wanted to share the community, too. Our team was just featured in a Data Insights magazine, which is a publication that goes to all the school districts in Pennsylvania. I've gotten several, you know, kudos and some jabs from friends of mine across the state for being featured in this magazine, but it's a big deal. And this is also a testament to the decisions that are made at this level as well, because we are one of the only few, a handful, and I mean few. Sure. And I sent you guys a digital copy if you want to read it, too.
We have a digital copy.
The very, very few secondary MTSS programs that are truly data-informed, MTSS programs, multi-tiered systems of support. So, and we talk about that ad nauseam, but basically that means that every single kid gets what they need, no matter what, based on their data and their performance. So, you know, kudos to you all and to the junior high team and to the work of these people here, because it matters, it makes a difference, and we are, you know, leaders in the state as far as that's concerned, and that should be celebrated. So nothing but good news tonight, sir.
Very good, very good. Congratulations to all concerned this evening. Ron, you have a solicitor's report for us tonight.
I was going to, but it's not necessarily a good case. Now, it's good for the district, because we do have this protocol in place, but there was a case out of Philadelphia, a very unfortunate case of a charter school. Charter school was run through the Philadelphia City School, where there was a sexual assault by a bus driver on a bus. And essentially, the case really says that the district should have known, because they have required background checks, they didn't perform the required background checks, and thus the district was able to be liable for that issue. I share that only because, again, we do vet it here in all the districts that I work at. I know that they get the clearances from the bus drivers. We also vet it at our level to make sure that they're on file. So again, you know, we don't foresee that anything of this nature would happen, but it does show you that you just got to make sure that we're vetting every single individual. It's required by state law to make sure that bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians all have their background checked. So again, just making sure that we keep up that process.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it, Mr. President, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Okay, we're down to item number two, Strategy Solutions Presentation. Deb, it's a good piece.
And for those of you who haven't met yet, I'm Deborah Thompson, President of Strategy Solutions, and my colleagues Rodney Green and Jackie Pacheco are here with us tonight. For those of you who may remember us, who were here a few years ago and helped the school district actually do a public engagement process to decide what to do with Eisenhower, elementary schools, right? So what we're proposing to you is to do another, a slightly different type of public engagement process to look at what might be the best uses for Forest Man, which is a school. So this is just probably our proposal that sort of outlines the process. And the outcome, the outcome of what we're recommending is that you are able to make some decisions on a future Forest Man that's informed by community participation. So if you look at the, and these pages are not mine, okay? So sit down.
Yeah. Why don't you sit down? Have a seat, please. Okay? Sit down. Yes. Sit down. Sit down.
So before I jump into this, I will let, does everyone know, Ron?
We got his picture and information on an email today, so we...
Rodney, Rodney...
You're the vice...
Rodney was our superintendent for six months.
It seemed like six months, I think it was eight weeks. That's okay.
Six months. When Dale, when Dale had to take temporary...
Okay.
That's how we met Rodney.
His face is red now, we're embarrassing him. That's cool.
Yeah, and Strategy Solutions is a business development and a community engagement firm. We have offices in Pittsburgh and Erie, and we will refer to the school district, I believe, originally by Denny Kuko from the, from DCED, who knew that we were community engagement specialists and had a reputation for engaging and listening to all voices as part of the process. My company, I'm the founder of Strategy Solutions. We are celebrating our 26th anniversary on May 1st. Jackie and I have worked together for nineteen of those 26 years, even though she was three when she started working for Strategy Solutions. But we partnered up together, and what's interesting, we partnered up together, I think, Tom, it was at your recommendation, that Rodney and us worked together, somebody...
I know you needed a job.
Right? But he has, he has long and deep school district experience, we have long and deep public engagement experience, not necessarily in school districts. So we actually teamed up together to help the process a few years ago here for Eisenhower, and we actually just recently completed another community engagement process for the Warren County School District, not all that long ago, helping them look at what to do with their building configuration as well. So we've put together a proposal here that we think will give you a good opportunity to hear the voice of the community about what to do with Forest Man and ultimately make a decision, engaging all of your committees along the way in that decision-making process. So what we're actually, so if you look at, it's probably on page six or seven of the proposal, there's actually a timeline. So this is the activities that we're recommending. If you agree to accept our proposal, our plan is to have bi-weekly project planning meetings and discuss, and begin to discuss an approach for an open house in a community engagement process. What we're actually recommending to you is we start this community engagement process with an open house at Forest Man, because word has it on the grapevine that there's a number of individuals and/or organizations in the community and in the surrounding area that might actually be interested in that property. So our idea is to start out with an open house as the first major activity, working with the outreach committee of your board to plan for that open house, including some marketing efforts, looking at targeting some particular individuals in the media to see who might be interested in the property. Now, the coalition of the willing isn't necessarily all the potential uses of the property. So we also recommend that we do some brainstorming and look at the possible uses and invite selected people to that open house, or individuals that represent companies that might find a use for that particular property. And then bring people together and have them actually come and take a look at it so that they can express interest. And that, there's a twofold, there's a twofold objective in that, is A, to look at people who might actually be interested in it, but also to look at what kinds of things would they be interested in potentially dealing with it? Because whether or not any of those people might actually ultimately make a decision in purchase of it, there might be others who might also be interested in the site that have similar kinds of background or industry interests. We also, we also want to actually conduct a community survey that, in order to get input from the community about what the possible uses of the facility could be and what people's, you know, what people's interests are and what they would support or not support in terms of another use for the facility. We're suggesting that you do an open house at the end of March at the Horse Man facility. In the next few weeks after that, conduct some one-on-one interviews with those who expressed interest in the building to identify that interest, as well as a preference for some type of financial arrangement and what the building needs would be. We would also conduct additional one-on-one interviews with potential building process that might express interest in the building based on what we might propose or identify as other use of the building, even if they didn't show up to the open house. Okay? So there's a variety of different kinds of uses that I could think of for that building. It's actually a very nice building. And there could be, you know, there could be a half a dozen or more different uses for it that are worth actually contacting organizations that could be possibly used of it. Like, for example, it could be, it could be transitioned into apartment, into a senior apartment building, or even a market-rated apartment building. Those are, it could be, one of the things that I thought about, it could actually be a location for the library, which would be, it's a larger building than the library, and I don't know if you know about the condition of the library. It's kind of, it's very squeezed into the building that it's in right now. Okay? So those are just some ideas. But then we would bring the, we would bring the results of those interviews to the academic and extracurricular committee meeting to discuss possible academic uses and needs for Horse Man based on the facilities plan, so that you could actually continue to use that building for academic or academic support services of some fashion. So that's worth exploring throughout this process, knowing what external interests there might be for it. We would propose to come to the full board meeting on April 8th to talk about the criteria for selecting options and reviewing the feedback from interested individuals and groups. And we're big believers in making decisions based on how different options score, based on objective criteria. Those of you who are on the board that went through the process before know that we like to objectively think about and use criteria to rate different options. So we would go through a similar process, like, similar to the way we did it before for this particular, for this particular option. Because you could have academic options, you could have external options, but we would then review the survey draft with the full board. We talk about, with the Personnel and Policy Committee, to talk about staffing implications for the various options and the impact that each would have on the district staff. We would propose to talk with the Building and Grounds Committee on April 15th about what the current building needs are and what the potential investment might be, especially if the academic uses of the building seem to be attractive. We would talk about what that would look like. Come back to the Audit and Finance Committee on April 22nd to talk about the financial implications for the various options and the facility needs. At the end of April, the beginning of May, we would then conduct a community survey based on the possible options that you all agreed that you actually wanted to explore, getting community input on, based on the research that we had done to date and the vetting process to that point. We would then, again, do another round of committee meetings, academic and extracurricular, to review the data collective, to talk about implications of the options as it relates to academic or extracurricular opportunities. We'd come to the full board meeting on May 13th to talk about the results from the community survey and narrow down options based on the committee input. We would then go to Personnel and Policy Committee to talk about what the impact of any of those, those final options would have on staffing and determine the staffing plan needed. Building and Grounds and Outreach Committee members would then review the data and discuss implications on the facility needs, possible investment, and talk about how to communicate those findings back to the community. And the Audit and Finance Committee would then talk about the final face, the final financial options, and whether, what the options were to sell, lease, or rent the space, determine the projected revenue that the district could anticipate from each option, and then with a final decision to be made by the board in June. If everything goes...
Yes, we have questions?
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay, great. The open house, then, just to clarify, the one that you want to have at the end of March, this is not for the community, this is by invitation?
Oh, anybody can come.
Okay. So, but you, but who, but who you really want to come, are people who are interested in the property?
Correct.
And so that's a squish, how are you getting people? I'm just asking. You know, that's a squish timeline there if you're doing it the end of March, to have a good turnout. How do you find people?
Well, you advertise it.
Yeah.
Okay? Advertise it on social media, you do a press release. From what we understand, there's already been a short list of people who have expressed interest in the property.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. Okay. All right. And we've done, how many people have answered your survey that you put on?
I think it was six last I checked, but let me check while we're talking.
And we have, we have contacts in the region that have interest, like, for example...
Okay.
Okay, I'll give you an example. The hospital's one of our clients, the library is one of our clients.
Right, right.
Okay? Potential uses of that building could be for a medical facility of some type...
Right.
Or for, for the relocation of the library.
Right, but there's no elevator?
No.
In Horse Man?
It doesn't matter.
There's one in the library.
I know, but elevator could be put in the building.
Okay.
Okay?
Would it be? Okay, good.
Six comments.
Okay, so that's a...
So we would do some outreach to folks that we know, that we know that might have an interest in some use for it or be able to think about that as well.
Yeah. Because we're not getting a lot of, I don't feel, maybe I'm wrong, community input. We had that, you know, the hearing, and I counted, there were fourteen people in the audience, but some of them were actually couples, so, you know. And then there were about fourteen people watching online, and so I think the focus that, for the open house, I like that idea, and if you have those connections and can make that something successful, that's great.
Well, and I think what we do is, is we're going to do some outreach to find people who might be candidates to look at the building as an investment property.
Right.
So that could be, that could be any number of different kinds of people. So what we would do is, we would invite them, we would contact them, and if they can't come to the, if they would express interest and can't come to the open house date, we would make arrangements for them to be able to tour the facility.
That's right.
Okay? But the idea is that doing an open house would allow people who might come, who might know somebody, to know somebody. So, yeah, we'd allow community residents to come, just if they're interested and they want to see what's going on. But the idea would be to conduct some outreach and to see if we can identify some businesses that might actually have an interest in the use of the property.
Deb, one of the, you mentioned two community groups, the hospital and the library, might have an interest in it. We know that the ICTC is also looking for some space or trying to figure out ways to expand their program. So I would certainly encourage you to include them in that list of people to approach for the open house. The Indiana County Technology Center. Ron is very familiar with it.
I think the other thing, just to add to this, when you have an open house, even though, like I said, we're going to look for some of those stakeholders that we know already might have some kind of investment interest or some vision, you never know. When you have an open house, you get community people, so you're going to have some curiosity if you're just know about it. That's a good thing. You're going to have people come through because they want to see what has been all the discussion about the building, they want to walk the bricks, so to speak. And that will generate some additional, I would say, conversation and dialogue. You just never know, some of those contacts end up being real, live kind of referrals to other types of people. So I think, you know, you can't, you can't go wrong by doing an open house. And, you know, as more mentioned, one, the educational, I think there are other educational entities out there, there are learning providers, there are special needs providers, there are even adult skills, learning, need providers. I mean, you just never know until you kind of get that process started.
Okay, that's great. What, you said at the end of March, what's a good time and day that you usually do these types of open houses? Do you do them in the evening, in the day?
You try to bridge both. I mean, and what you can do is do a couple sessions. I've seen where you've had like a daytime session, but then also an evening, an early evening session, to kind of, at least we've changed time, so we have a little bit more daylight in the evening. But I think if you can kind of catch a couple different sessions.
Yeah, like maybe do three to five, six to eight, something like that. Three to seven, give people a chance to come, to call.
And this would be open to not-for-profits as well as for-profit organizations, and virtually anything?
Correct. Virtually anything that could use it.
And how do you do your community survey?
So last time we did it in the district and had a letter, sort of use the district distribution channels, and then it was predominantly an online survey that we had strategically placed paper copies available. So if people knew that they could come here, or like come to the libraries, you could know that they didn't have access to the internet. But we also did, you know, Facebook, social media, press releases around that.
And Jackie, you'll break that down by different category of stakeholder, correct? I think last time it was like...
Correct, yeah, well, we'll do a demographic question, so we can see what do, you know, teachers say versus parents first, generally.
Versus people that live in the direct area of that neighborhood.
And will there be questions on that survey if we would decide to keep the building for the academ, you know, the chair of the academic committee, Sue, I don't think I've heard either of you yet, I'm not sure. But will there be questions on there, or how will you gather the information about if we would decide to keep it and use it for our academic purposes?
We'd ask people how they felt about that, okay?
I mean, you can tailor the questions.
So, we will, yes, we will work with you to tailor the questions.
Okay, so each committee that you're working with will help you design the questions?
Correct.
Right. Because part of that will be also the cost, because everybody might say, yes, we want to keep it, but the cost would factor into that as well, so that would have to come out somehow in the survey.
And hopefully that, yeah, that would come out.
At the heart of all this has to be, you know, do we keep it just as it is? You know, that's got to be the thing. I mean, that's the whole point of the 780 process, is to make sure that we're looking at every possible option, including keep it as it is, you know, so...
Because that is one of the things that we put out there when we, at the hearing, one of the potential options was repurposing it for district use.
Right, right.
And so, correct, if I'm wrong, I'm assuming that the next step would probably be you meet with my team to really start building that, and then we get the input from the committees to make sure we meet this time on? I'm guessing, but I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, that's how that works.
Jim, Jim is chair of the Outreach Committee.
Oh, yeah.
So he may be tasked, according to your proposal, a little earlier to start the planning for, for the open house.
Right.
March 18th.
Yes, so it's early on the schedule, which is good.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you agree to move forward with us, we will be pleased with the administration here in the next few days to start that organizing process, plan to join in with the Outreach Committee on the 18th, begin to talk about the, begin to talk about the ideas, the different groups that have expressed interest, our thoughts about others who might be invited.
The last time, you know, we made sure that key people were invited, the county commissioners were, of course, invited, so they would know, not that they wouldn't find out otherwise, but I thought your survey the last time was just excellent. I really thought that what we gleaned from it, it was so obvious. That's what struck, that's what I remember. The solution was just clear what was preferred. There wasn't really, nothing was particularly close.
Well, and then and what what we found over the years, if you're if you're clear about the options and you're clear about the criteria that you're rating the options, and you listen to all parties, you know, the whole idea is to give people the opportunity to be heard, because people want to be heard. So we give folks the opportunity to weigh in on it, and and we construct, we construct the survey in a, in a, you know, using a good method of survey construction methodology. People people will give their input, and and the answer will be clear. And you'll be able to tell if there's differences of opinion from one group to another. And we were able to do that throughout the last process as well. So we're hoping that we're hoping that we can do that same consensus building through this iterative process, getting input from each of the committees, which is what you all wanted to do. So we designed it in a way that sort of engages everybody to keep that, keep the input flowing and the agenda flowing and give the community an opportunity for input.
One of the things that I liked about it, Deb, was you were able to justify from a the data from a statistically significant perspective, that this wasn't just polling only those people that wanted two buildings or those people that wanted five buildings or whatever. It was it was, you could stand behind it from a statistical significant perspective.
Right.
And I really, really appreciated that for the last time, and hopefully the the same data you would collect would would reflect that level of integrity.
Absolutely, and and we would do the same, we would do the same steps in terms of, you know, marketing and awareness and outreach to encourage people to participate in it. But, I mean, the Indiana community is very caring about the community here, okay? We, in between here, it was probably, I don't know, probably nine months or so, 10 months after we did your survey, we did a survey for the library and got 400 people to participate in the survey for the library. Okay? Yeah, so we'll announce it, get the word out. You know, the school district has good, you know, has access to a lot of people. We'll get some social media going and some community press, and I think people will, people will weigh in.
I I think they will too. I mean, they're, one of the things that concerns me is about how we designed the survey, and this is just early on when I know. But I often go back to the idea that we were so lucky during this unpredictable pandemic. I mean, it came out of nowhere. We were just fortunate we had the space, that we didn't have to go out and rent it. Remember, we even talked about, we went to churches to see where we could put students to have them socially distanced or physically distanced properly. And so I think that when we do this open house, it would be nice to have something about the history of it and what and the services to the community recently, because if you get into the whole subject of building configurations, and let's say, for example, a future board might have the resources to take on a building like Ben Franklin, you may want to eliminate the side that's sort of in that swampy area and build more up, you know. Where do you put students in the meantime? And space is important, and what is that space worth? And that people see it framed and all the options are fair, because I'm sure you can find somebody to buy it eventually.
Right, well, and I mean, again, from what I understand, one of the options is to keep it. One of the options on the table is to keep it for use internally.
Yeah.
Right? It could be part of a relocation strategy while you renovate other buildings, which actually, right? And and that is a, that's a viable reason to keep it for some period of time, okay? Especially since you have other buildings that you want to renovate. So you could, I mean, the best, the best choice, and I think this is an option we have to explore and you all have to consider versus other options, you know, that that could be, that could be the best alternative for you for managing students through a master building planning process over the next six or nine years. You don't, I mean, you don't have to, you don't have to get rid of it now, right? What we understand is that you're looking for the best choice to make, right?
The next first best use of the building.
Right.
Whatever that next first best use is.
Right.
Tom, you had a?
Yeah, what we're here today to do is decide whether we're going to hire them or not. Here to decide what we're going to do today.
Correct.
The process is to hire these folks, and $15,000 doesn't help our balance, but I can I can attest to that, that what the work they did with reconfiguration is one of the reasons we don't have 400 people hanging off the roof when we're doing the project. So I would certainly recommend that we engage these people, they get started right away. They did tremendous work that I didn't have to do with interviewing teachers and interviewing and then documenting that. And it was, and it was kind of crazy how quickly, how quickly became always this, what decision we needed to make as a board. We we had the data, we had the support of the community, and that continues to this day.
Yeah, I like this too for a couple reasons. One, they're experts in this kind of work, and they have experience. Second thing is it lightens the lift on our team quite a bit, like, we can do this for you. But we have 75,000 other things to do as well, so the the help is appreciated. The other thing it is, is it's an outside agency that doesn't have any skin in the game, right? They're an unbiased entity, they're going to look at this from a purely statistic and scientific process, and they're going to give us information that we then can take and apply to context to, I mean, or, you know, apply to our personal beliefs and in what, you know, or angle on. So I like it for all those reasons. So I support this for sure, but it's a decision for the board. Any other questions from board members, Jackie, Deb, and Rod? Okay, thank you very much. The vote will occur a little bit later in the process. You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome to stick around or whatever you need to do. Okay, I think we're down to item number three, approval of the minutes in the agenda. So moved, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second on the minutes in the agenda. Questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions carried. Okay, I'm up with the ICTC report. I did send a copy of this out a little earlier this afternoon. My apologies for not getting it out any sooner. We did have a briefing from the newly named Engineering, Machining, and Design Program. They reverse engineered a jaw coupler in support of the Maintenance Department at IRMC, which was really terrific to have watched what those students and what that teacher up there did to to make all that happen. There was also some routine hirings, leaves, and advertising for a welding instructor. ICTC is planning to expand their welding program, and Mr. Keith McCracken is retiring. Keith has been an outstanding member of that of that organization and community for a number of years. He reinvigorated the electrical program up there, and he's retiring at the end of this school year, so they're going to advertise for his replacement. The business office, they've accepted the final audit, they awarded some contracts and accepted some grants. One of the more interesting ones was they accepted a PDE grant for $85,000, and then they turned around and they used it to purchase the Adama's table, which some of us saw at another place. Under Student Activities, they approved some revisions of the calendar, accepted multiple donations, and they completed the ninth grade. They had a very high rate. If I, I had to double check my notes, but I believe they said 77% of those who indicated an interest in the ICTC were going back overall for a shadow program, where they would actually spend some time in in the individual program. The Indiana School District, we had 223 students toured in January. Of that, 72 of our students agreed to go back for a shadow experience. There were several letters of intent to expand the Practical Nursing Program. They approved one policy. The directors, under the director's update, they did move the PAC meeting back to the 13th of August. That's because normally it's closer to school starting, and some of the superintendents didn't think that was going to be a great idea. And then they also scheduled a joint PAC meeting with the sending schools and business managers to talk about some future plans. So that's the ICTC report for this, for this month. Erin, Sue, what's going on over there?
We met on February 20th, and I attached my report to Walter's email today too, so you have the written report for that. But before our meeting, we had a really informative session from a representative of every single department at Aaron, just to let the board know what all kinds of things they're doing, from the budget office to the homeless coordinator, all of them. And they had this presentation prepared for us. And we did suggest that they give that presentation at our retreat coming up. So they are going to do that, each person, just a very brief highlight of what all they do through the intermediate unit. We also approved the.
The gala, the, is the thing where I was?
Yes.
Oh, great.
So that'll take some pressure off you for some presentation type.
Well, I was just thinking, boy, I wish I could have seen that.
Yeah, they're going to do it for us at the. We approved the list of payments, deposits, charter report, and budget summary. We accepted resignations from one paraprofessional, three 21st century after-school program lead staff, and then we hired two paraprofessionals, one speech-language pathologist, three lead staff, and three hourly staff for our 21st century program. We approved one IUP intern for human development and family science. We authorized the acceptance of an adult basic education direct services grant for Accepted several agreements and contracts, completed the first readings of several policies, and approved several policies. And may I also make an announcement from the Education Foundation, because it's tied to Aaron, so I'm a member of that board as well. And just to let you all know, I told you before, we were going to be having a fundraiser that is going to be on Saturday, April 13th, at 6:00 PM at the Eagles. It's going to be music bingo, there's going to be a basket and other item raffles from local businesses and communities, and a 50-50. Tickets will be $25 in advance or $30 at the door. And we are in accepting any donations that anybody would like to give, either monetary donations, gift cards, items for the raffle, baskets. We're going to be pounding the pavement with it for businesses to try to get some support. So that's my report. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thanks, Sue.
And I will have tickets if anybody wants tickets. Happy to sell them.
Now, my suggestion is you talk to that guy over in the corner there to help you sell.
Maybe you can take tickets out. Happy to give you some right now.
He has none.
All the proceeds that goes to our after-school programs, and our, our school is one of the biggest, some of the most children there from IASD, so.
Good. Jim, outreach.
We did not have a meeting. We have one next week, as the schedule on the proposal said, and we will be talking a lot about horse man and the planning.
Very good. Quintina, the library.
They recently hired a new executive director. She should be starting soon. I also got drafted into the governance committee, so I want that.
They know good talent.
And they're looking for more board members. It's a significant need for some people that want to serve on the boards. So if you know anyone, contact library. They're having a rough time all together, so.
One thing I would suggest would be that once the new director comes in and gets herself located and seated and comfortable, please extend her an invitation to to come to a board meeting. And under item number two presentations, we'll give her a few few minutes to introduce herself, because we do, you know, support the library, and it's important that we we get to know her.
Sounds good.
Quintina, did they announce the name yet for?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Well, it's pretty soon. She just accepted the offer. They should announce it probably by the end of this week. Oh, and Strategy Solutions has helped with the process, so, yeah.
Okay, very good.
So they've been really good with that, so.
Very good.
Yeah.
All right, Sally, PSBA, what's going on over there?
Just a short report. On Thursday, there's a spring legal roundup. You learn about significant developments in school law. If anybody wants to attend that, they can get on the register for it. You can also earn, this is a different topic now, you can earn your certificate in cyber risk oversight for public schools. You have to apply to get in on that, and the applications are due March 31st. The student scholarships are due March 15th, that's this Friday, and there will be, and I don't know, I'm dying to know if anybody ever went to this, it's the PASA, PSBA conference, School Leadership Conference. Do people go to that from here?
We have in the past. We, you know, occasionally.
You have, it's in the Poconos, it's October 16th, but that is Sunday to Tuesday. They're asking for presenters, and they're asking for musical performers from high school students groups that you can get on and put an application in there, and they're going to pick a student group, musical group. I thought of, oh, and and it's also, if you can't make it, it's it's live stream, so if we can't make it, we can always watch it on live stream.
Typically, we send a board member.
You do, okay. And I thought up some good topics that we could present on as a board. They're comedic. I read them to my husband, and he said, do not share them with the rest of the group. So thanks to him, you won't hear my funny topics.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Sue. Or Sally, Sue, you're back up again with academic extracurricular.
Yes, we met on March 4th. We, several of the items that we discussed are on for a vote today. We spent probably most of our time discussing the calendar. We were presented with two options of calendars, Calendar A and Calendar B. The main difference was in February, there were days blocked out to actually try to move students into Eisenhower at that time. But we had a lengthy discussion and more reasons such as we have no guarantee the building is going to be done. Most projects don't finish at the time that we hope or think they're going to. Also, PSSAs come up, and we just thought it would be very, very disruptive. Also, that would mean a change in bus schedule. It would just be so many different things that it would affect. So we are proposing to bring Calendar A to the board tonight for a vote. Calendar A has, does not have that time in February. Almost everything else, I think, is, was pretty much the same.
Are we starting earlier this year?
Yes, ma'am. The Calendar A, drawbacks to either calendar, or we're starting a little bit earlier this coming year, which brings the threat of the heat problem in two of our buildings. But, you know, I know we're at that same situation in June as well. So we, it's a give or take. We've done a lot of work this time to align that calendar to the ICTC calendar and the surrounding school districts, so that we are making sure ICT students are getting as much time with their teachers as as everyone else. So that's really what drove that start date.
Right.
And my plan is next year to try to drive that conversation. I'll be a little bit better at this job next year, and I'll get out in front of that one and try to push them all back instead of pushing us up. Man, that's my plan.
At our meeting, we also discussed the associate degree at high school launch and enrollment. We talked about some field trips that we have on for today, and I can see those on the agenda. Partnerships for literacy graduate assistants, solar eclipse classes, so that our students will be able to do the solar eclipse. Summer camp discussion we do have on here, we are going to be having to make some cutbacks because we used to use Esters funds for a lot of that. and we won't have the ESRS funds anymore. But we will, will be in partnership with, uh, the Excellence Foundation and the Twenty-First Century Grant. So Rob has assured us that our students will still get a quality experience uh, because we will still be doing some of the academic parts of the camp. Then for our discussion items, we, we recapped the ICTC tour. We talked some, what about the repurposing of Horace Mann and some of the options that were mentioned at our hearing? Extended school year plans and the teacher perception data related to principal realignment. Rob did send out some general information as a result of the surveys. Anything you'd like to add before I go to the motion?
Uh, no, I, I think once you make the motion, there's a discussion.
All right. So we move to the agenda five point two, student disciplinary agreement that based on the recommendation of administration, the board approves a student disciplinary agreement for student number two, three, two, four dash seven as presented.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I discussed the school calendar that based on the recommendation of the committee, the board approves the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school calendar as submitted and the following dates be designated as official school district holidays per the Pennsylvania School Code. September second, November eleventh, November twenty-ninth, December twenty-sixth and April eighteenth.
Okay, it's moved in second. Questions or discussion on the proposed school calendar?
Just want to, uh, put out a couple of things. This school calendar eliminates two of the A P T T nights, which are nights that teachers stay late to engage families and takes the, uh, uh, huge parent teacher conferences from February and eliminates that, changes it into day-to-days. That is going to satisfy, um, one of their requests that came out of N C E work that we did, the National Council for Education and Economy, about giving teachers some time to really, to build a data culture. They need time to work with that data and make it, uh, an actionable thing. So we've worked those days in there and we were, because of the moves we made, we were able to actually increase teacher time plan and not eliminate any student days as, or student hours as well. Actually, student-teacher FaceTime hours will go up slightly, um, while we provide this opportunity for our teachers to learn and grow as well.
Okay. Other questions, comments or discussion? Okay, um, I, I'm going to vote no on the calendar only because I'm not ready to throw the towel in on whether the building is going to be done or not, but I certainly respect the decision of the board and will support the ultimate decision, whatever that is. Any other questions, comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Motion carries.
Five point four, the Act eighty days that based on the recommendation of the committee, the board authorizes the superintendent to submit to the Department of Ed a request under Act eighty for approval for the district to utilize seven full days during the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year as follows, August nineteenth, August twentieth, October fourteenth, November twenty-seventh, January twentieth of twenty-twenty-five, March twenty-first and May ninth as full days. These days will be used for curriculum development.
Questions, comments or discussion? Rob, anything you or Justin want to add to this?
This is a legal requirement that we have to do under, uh, the rules under P D E. So, uh, that's, that's really it. It's just a professional goal of this for our teachers that we have to look for.
Okay, Sal, you have a question?
No.
You were looking like you were. Okay, any other questions, comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Five point five, dual enrollment. Based on the recommendation of the committee, the board approves the high school academy and dual enrollment programming agreement with the Community College of Beaver County as submitted.
Second. Moved in second. Justin?
Yeah, so, um, we have a partnership with the Community College of Beaver County. They came to present to us a few academic meetings ago. Uh, I think it's a great opportunity for our kids and it's another opportunity for our kids that's going to get them college credits, uh, while they're in high school. Uh, specifically, uh, for aviation program.
Any other questions, comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
On five point six, we have four field trip requests. The first one is for students participating in art portfolio club and French exchange program to Washington, D.C. to visit the Sackler Gallery, Kirschhorn Museum, National Gallery of Art, National Portrait Gallery and National Monuments at only cost to the district of substitute teachers of four hundred and eighty dollars. The second one, a trip to Washington, D.C. to visit the Holocaust Museum and Smithsonian Museum of American History. This one came up kind of last minute. Buy approximately two hundred tenth-grade history students and tenth through twelfth-grade chaperones on Friday, April twenty-sixth. No cost to the district, uh, except one thousand nine hundred eight dollars for substitute teachers with all transportation costs and funding through the Blanch Beerman Memorial Fund. The third one is the trip on April eighteenth for six students participating in the sailing, sailing club to Fells Point, Maryland, uh, to board the tall ship Pride of Baltimore as part of the working crew at a cost to the district of one hundred fifty-nine dollars for a substitute. And the final one is an educational trip on April fifth for ten students participating in the aviation club to Chantilly, Virginia, to the National Air and Space Museum at a cost of three hundred eighteen dollars for a substitute.
Questions, comments or discussion?
Very quickly, on the, uh, Holocaust Museum, the Beerman Foundation provides this opportunity for students from around the area. And if there's extra, uh, opportunities, they recycle. You usually only get to go once every other year. Sometimes it comes back around. Um, and we can't pass up an educational opportunity like that. So that's why I was at, at it late. And then I have Mr. Murphy here who can speak intelligently to both the sailing and aviation field trip, correct? So, so I didn't know if you wanted to make a comment or anything.
Sure. Good evening. Hi, I'm Dan Murphy. I teach Spanish at I H S. But I am the faculty advisor of the sailing club. And I've worked with Mr. Nathaniel Arthurs for, uh, the last three years. And so, you know, I'm on board, uh, if you're to know you, literally. And, um, so this year, uh, Mr. Arthurs has, uh, once again, um, created the itineraries when in communication with, um, entities there in Maryland, around the Baltimore area. Uh, last year, we got to go to the Naval Academy in Annapolis, which was really great. And we also got to be on a ship, um, oh, forgive me, the name that, uh, modeled the ship anyway, Oyster, uh, boat in Chesapeake Bay. And so we had a small group and the year before that we went to Erie and we got to learn some things about the work we teach while, uh, our, our knowledge, uh, in terms of science and American history and the like. So this year, uh, I can speak to the fact that, um, Mr. Arthurs, um, needs me to be there for the, uh, sailing, uh, club excursion on April, um, fifteenth, eighteenth, sorry, uh, the eighteenth. And the itinerary is very similar and Mr. Arthurs is also community advisor of the aviation, aviation club, uh, at I H S. And there's a little bit of overlap with one or two members, uh, being members of both clubs. And, um, so he is, um, I remember reading this somewhere that he's willing to, um, work for the cost in advance to the district. That the cost for the sailing club, uh, expedition is the substitute teacher. That would be so that I could have a substitute teacher on that school day. I could not speak specifically, but I imagine that for the, um, aviation club, Mr. Pushkar would be the faculty advisor and it seems that perhaps there'd be another faculty advisor at I H S. And so the itinerary is very similar. Um, the, the whole idea is to travel with students leaving the senior high approximately six A M. And returning to the senior high approximately nine thirty P M. All in one day. And, um, taking small groups of students and the cost is very low. And Mr. Arthurs, had the pleasure of meeting him. He's, uh, very well organized, uh, very professional and he's a professor of community. And, and I've known him, uh, since, um, second grade over at Eisenhower Elementary School. So we go way back. So if you have any questions, I'll try to, um, elaborate or clarify. And the other things, um, I may not know specifically, ask Mr. Arthurs and Mr. Pushkar would, uh, perhaps email.
Obviously, this is an awesome educational opportunity for our kids and a life experience I'll never forget. So we support this and we appreciate.
Thank you so much. Yes.
Do you have a question on the, um, on the, um, Holocaust Museum, the, uh, there's two hundred kids going.
We don't need that many subs, is your question?
Yeah, there are twenty-five kids left.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be, yeah, there will be, should be a cost not to exceed that many subs. Yeah, we don't need all those subs. You're right.
Okay, okay. Very good. Um, yeah, and this is, this is the, uh, picture of the, of the tall ship.
Yeah, that's very cool.
Really cool.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, so, and so anybody on the board that wants to go?
So, so the sailing club really is about sailing and not about boating then?
Oh, yeah, it's about sailing. Um, yes, there are also-
Those would be awesome.
It looks cool.
And we've had graduates of both clubs, uh, pilots and sailors. So for instance, uh, currently we have Morgan Groh, who is an I H S student. And she already knows a lot about sailing. Her family, um, participates in sailing. Mr. Arthur is along with, uh, Ms. Reddick and sometimes Mrs. Angelo. They facilitate that way. I, I, I myself am not very skilled, so I'm, uh, just swabbing the deck. I'm learning.
Just had an American woman, twenty-nine-year-old sail around the world. So, which, I mean, unbelievable for anybody. There are only two hundred people that have been that.
Very good. Questions, comments or discussion on this motion for the four field trips? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Murphy.
Five point seven, I U P literacy graduate assistance. That based on the recommendation of our committee, the board approves the agreement with I U P for literacy graduate assistance for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as submitted and authorize the administration to hire up to six graduate assistants not to exceed one hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred dollars.
Okay, questions, comments or discussion on that? Rob, do you want to?
It's an excellent partnership. It's been here for a long time. It produces very highly trained and qualified educators and, uh, we're happy to keep it going.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Five point eight, solar eclipse glasses that based on the recommendation, the board approves the purchase of solar glasses for both K to five buildings to view solar eclipse on April eighth, twenty-twenty-four at a cost not to exceed one thousand seven hundred dollars.
Okay, moved in second. Uh, I think this is kind of an exciting, uh, potentially once in a long while opportunity and to allow our kids to do this safely, I think is certainly worth the investment. Anything else, Rob?
Yeah, it's seventeen thousand dollars or seventeen hard dollars. I'm sorry. It seems like a lot, but it's, you know, that's a pocket kid. So it's, and it's for their safety and for their experience. So.
And they're not allowed to throw them out.
No, we're going to keep them. We recycle them. Excellent.
Okay, questions, comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Five point nine, summer camp. Based on the recommendation of our committee, the board authorizes the administration to post, interview and hire for the following staff in the Twenty-First Century Summer Camp. Their per diem daily rate based upon enrollment. Those positions are up to ten K to eight teachers or tutors, one administrative assistant, one nurse and one food service. Second.
Question, okay. Rob, why don't you go ahead and, or Justin, either one of you?
Yeah, so this is, uh, this is the, what we need to, uh, provide as close to the same program we provided every summer without, uh, spending as much money as we had through ESRS. It's going to be a significant reduction in the number of educational staff we have on the premises. We're just going to get very targeted with who we're working with at this program. So they're going to be, we're going to use end-of-year data and a screener at the beginning of the year, figure out who, who needs the most help and our educators are going to target those, those students. The nurse obviously is there to pass out meds and make sure that anybody that gets hurt is well attended to. And the administrative assistant is there for just daily operations to help the Twenty-First Century, uh, staff with everything they need.
And the purpose is to help with some of their loss in, in summer learning in addition?
That's originally the design. If this goes all the way back to COVID, that's why ESRS was paying for it was there's a summer loss. And when you have a pandemic and you shut down for a few weeks, that there's a significant loss. It was always designed to, to catch them up. It actually, originally it was called the summer catch-up camp. And we changed the name to just summer camp now. But it's, uh, that's what it's there for. It's there to make sure that that slide does not happen over the summer or it's not as significant over the summer because there is a lot of data. The summer slide is, is a real thing statistically, kids, especially our most vulnerable kids, our students with special needs have a, have a significant dip in learning and have a significant learning loss over summer.
Okay, any other questions, comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Finally, five ten, associate's degree in high school. Yet based on the recommendation committee, the board authorizes the administration to launch the associate's degree in high school program through Westmoreland Community College.
Fighting over a second. Okay. Rob, do you want to comment on this?
Yeah, so, um, so Wade, myself, Rob, uh, we've been working on, and, uh, actually, Mr. Duty was a, a, a huge partner for us, um, working on our ability to be able to provide, uh, all of our high school students the opportunity to get an associate's degree while in high school. And I think it's a great opportunity and while it's not, uh, while it will be expensive to start, I think the opportunities for us to be able to provide that financial support, uh, through foundation work, I think will be there longer term. But I think, uh, ju- to start, to have this as an option for our students, I think, is absolutely, uh, awesome and amazing for our school district. And I think, um, a lot of that credit, uh, goes to Wade and the, the high school staff that, that have really spent a lot of time, uh, working with Westmoreland County Community College. Good job, Wade.
Justin, do you want to very briefly talk about the college in the classroom versus the actual attendance at Westmoreland and how that impacts the financial, um, um, picture of this, of this program?
Uh, I think Rob might be better.
We get a significant discount for students that take classes in college and high school because our teachers, college and high school is our teachers teaching the curriculum, but it's also Westmoreland Community College curriculum as well. So we get a significant discount because they're in our classrooms with our lights on and our, you know, chalkboards, whatever, informeeting boards. However, the law says that fifty-one percent, in order for them to, to, uh, give us an associate's degree, fifty-one percent of those credits need to be taken at Westmoreland Community College or at I U P or at whatever the, uh, degree awarding program would be so that they can say with confidence, we own this degree, this person has, has met this mark. So they have to charge us full price. Currently, we actually, because we're not in Westmoreland Community College, or Westmoreland County, we actually pay the out-of-rate, out-of-county rate for those in-person classes, which raises the price significantly. Now, we're going to fight behind the scenes to try to get that reduced because we've been good partners to them and we expect the same in return for our kids. Um, but currently, that's what drives that cost, uh, up significantly. So it's the fifty-one percent of those credits have to be taken at the college or online with their professors at that increase rate.
The parents can still, and the students can still benefit financially by taking forty-nine percent of them through college in the classroom.
Oh, one hundred percent.
To meet that, those graduation requirements.
Absolutely. Even if this, even at full price of fifteen thousand dollars for a two years of college in today's day and age, I mean, that's a fraction of what you're going to pay for that at the university, no matter where you go. So it's a, it's a, it's an affordable option. It's a win for our students. But it also is, um, you know, there is different options. That's just one option to take this associate's degree. You could take as many credits through college and high school as you want. We've had students go to Robert Morris and transfer forty-two credits to Robert Morris. So, I mean, there's, there's definitely different options for parents to get that spring board, really take a year, a year and a half, two years off their, of the children's college at a fraction of the price. Thank you. It's such a huge win.
I, I have asked the administration to work with the county commissioners defined as in county at the same tuition as Westmoreland. We somehow are the victim in a classroom building. Um, and, um, we were in, we were in, in county at one point. The, the commissioners were making a payment. in, in county at one point, the, the commissioners were making a payment, um, and it's just, it's just odd that all of a sudden, now that they have this classroom building, we're now out of county. So, it doesn't make sense. So, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that somehow people come to their senses.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Jim, policy personnel. All right, we had a meeting tonight, uh, where we discussed, uh, policy 903, dealing with public comment in board meetings, uh, that will come to a vote in a future meeting. Uh, we also discussed, uh, the 2024-25 staffing recommendations, um, so that the administration can be all set to hire in May, and there's a couple motions to that effect. Uh, we talked about student parking lot policies, um. More to come on that. Um, also changes to the gold pass and a policy addressing graduation attire to allow, uh, students with civic, military, athletic, uh, social clubs, uh, to adorn their gowns with the appropriate cords to those organizations. Um, so I think we have eight, nine different, uh, motions here. Six point two, approval of board policies that based on the recommendation of the committee, the board approves policy number 200, enrollment in district. Policy 202, eligibility of non-resident students. Policy 217, graduation policy, sorry, graduation policy 254, educational opportunity for military children, and policy 810, transportation as submitted.
Moved in second. Uh, is this the first reading of these, then?
Uh, no, they were.
This is the second reading, so this will be the approval of these policies. Questions, comments, or discussion on these policies? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Six point three, leave of absence that re, based on the recommendation of the administration, the board approves the sabbatical leave of, of absence submitted by employee number 1745, beginning the first workday of the 2425 school year, continuing until the last workday of the same year, according to Article 10, Section 8 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement, and that based on the recommendation of the administration, the board approves the request for leave of absence submitted by employee 1420, ESL K to five teacher in accordance with Article 11, Section 2 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement, be approved from March 1st, 2024, after use of 10 family sick days and two personal days, and continue until May 13th, 2024, be approved.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion's carry, motion carries.
All right, uh, six point four, resignation of paraeducators that based on the recommendation of the administration, the board accepts with regret the letter of resignation from Mary Slagle, junior high paraeducator, effective March 7th, 2023, for personal reasons, and authorizes the administration to post-advertise hire for this position, and that based on the recommendation of the administration, the board accepts with regret the letter of resignation from Kira Murray, East Pike paraeducator, effective February 16th, 2024, due to other employment, and authorizes the administration to post-advertise hire for this position.
I'm assuming that's March 7th, 2024. Just before we get a second.
Does say 23 on there.
Just for clarification.
Justin. Now we're fighting over second, again. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Uh, six point five, extended school year program that based on the recommendation of the committee, the board authorizes the administration to post-interview and hire up to six special education teachers and up to eight paraeducators for the extended school year program.
Second.
Moved in second. Rob?
All I, all I wanna say is, again, Ms. Maruka and the teachers here work very hard to make this program successful for our students and our taxpayers. They're gonna be able to improve the, uh, quality of the program that we have and possibly save us as much as $30,000 in the meantime, so just a testament to the work she's been doing so far, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, Julia, what?
Thank you, that's all.
Yes, from the chair of the finance committee. Any other questions, comments, or discussion on the extended school year program? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Six point six, 2024-25 staffing recommendation that based on the recommendation from the committee and review of the class size averages, the board authorized the administration to post-advertise interview for the following teaching positions: autistic support at four to five, secondary ELA, elementary autistic support.
That one's gonna take.
Which is redundant, yeah. For some reason, it got listed twice. Elementary learning support, elementary up to five.
Second.
Okay, questions, comments, or discussion on that? Bob, is there anything you wanna?
No, there could be, uh, other positions brought forth to board at a later date, but right now, uh, after the staffing surveys and the look at the, uh, population and the needs, this is our recommendation.
Okay, other questions, comments, or discussion from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Uh, number six point seven, revisions to the student handbook that based on the recommendation of the committee, the board approves the changes to the graduation attire in the student handbook to the following: students may only adorn their graduation gowns with award pins and/or honor cords to demonstrate accomplishment or achievement through accredited educational, civic, military, athletic, or social organizations. Any requests must be made in writing and submitted to the high school principal. Graduation caps must be free of any additions other than the approved graduation tassel. All graduation attire must be pre-approved by school administration or staff designee for students to wear at their graduation ceremony.
Second.
Second. Questions, comments, or discussion on this motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Six point eight, school psychology interns that based on the recommendation of the administration, the board approves Taylor Dallas and Sarah Huck as school psychologist interns for the 2425 school year at a salary of $10,000 per person.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Six point nine, long-term substitute assignment that based on the recommendation of the administration, the board employs Autumn McAfee as a long-term elementary ESL substitute teacher effective February 29th, 2024, and continuing until May 13th, 2024, at a per diem rate of $250.41, structural one, step one, be approved pending receipt of all required paperwork.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And finally, six point 10, extra duty, extra pay that the board approves the following extra duty, extra pay assignment for the 2024-25 school year: girls volleyball head coach at $6,128, Melinda Osterling, employee.
Second.
Moving in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on this one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, Jim, Tom, looks like it's your turn.
No, um, ready report? Jared, do you have anything on Eisenhower?
Well, construction's moving along. We've been having our bi-weekly meetings. Um, I do believe they've come up with a construction schedule that keeps us on track, based on some delays we had earlier, um, with some masons and stuff, but, um, we're moving right along. Board members are welcome to schedule appointments to do walkthroughs at any, anytime.
Friday afternoon.
Friday at 3 o'clock.
We prefer after 3:30, when everything's kinda cleaned up and you're not having welder, welding overhead, and, um.
We don't want you in the, and we don't want you in the foundations.
Yes, so, but you can let myself or Larry know at any time if you would like to come and have a tour of what's happening over there, so.
I'd like to make just a quick comment. Even if you don't attend the tour, uh, it's worth a drive-by every once in a while, just to look at the changes that have occurred and, and the work that they've done. I mean, i, if you drive, I forget which, which street it is, but if you drive, must be 14th Street or whatever, you drive down the, uh, north-south wing there, um, you can see clear through the building. Okay, so it's pretty incredible, uh, uh, the extent that, that, that these guys have, have taken the building, so, you know, even if you can't attend, I would certainly encourage you to drive by once in a while, just to see from the outside some of the things that are happening.
What, what tour are you talking about?
If you want.
You wanted to walk through Eisenhower with.
Just, just, okay, I thought we.
The Friday afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Tour.
Yeah.
Okay, but, you know, even if you're not available for that, it's, it's worth a drive-by just every once in a while, to see all those things that have been happening.
Have they started the foundation work on the gym area?
I, I, I was over there last week. I haven't been over there in, in a couple days, I haven't seen it.
That's gotta be starting pretty soon.
As of Saturday, they hadn't.
Yeah, yeah, but they've moved an awful lot of dirt from the others, from the other two wings, from the south wing. And the mason did show up finally, so that's, that's encouraging. Okay, um, we have three change orders. Do you want me to, do you recommend holding any of these, or?
These ones are, are recommended for approval.
Okay, do you, you care to say what they are?
Um, there's, I mean, the first, the first one, change order four for J C Ors, just saying, changing some of the Joyce Design at the Office Edition. The second one is there's been some over-escavation that's needed to happen, just to get, um, to a depth that, uh, outside firm would approve, actually pouring footers. Um, so that's $4,000 worth of work right there, and that one has been pre-approved by myself and the clerk of the works, just to keep construction moving. And then K and K Plumbing is for some additional stormwater piping, um, over the, what is now the multipurpose room, but will be the art and the steam room.
Is that a motion?
So, those are the motions.
Second.
This is a sneaky way, so you didn't have to read.
I would read 7.3, 1, 2, and 3, or, or, read my motion.
Second.
As read, and then Julie would turn it, and then we would vote.
Okay, so she seconded. Questions, comments on the change orders? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, um, 7.4, the kitchen bids, based on the recommendation of the administration, the board approves a bid from Culinary Depot in the amount of $561,351,09 for kitchen equipment at Eisenhower Elementary.
Second. Moved in second. Jared, you wanna talk a little bit about where the funding is coming for this, uh, this particular part of the project?
Um, for this part, the, all this equipment will be purchased from our fruit service, um, program, um, which over the past couple years has been able to produce a profit. So, this will eat up a good bit of that profit, but not all of it, it'll still leave a balance within the fund, um, but at least this is not coming out of any of the money that we borrowed to do this project, so.
This is close to the number you had thought, you had budgeted, right, wasn't it?
I believe we were around $500,000, so we got three bids off of this. Um, we worked very closely, there was a lot of back and forth with the different companies, but, um, this company will be coming on-site and be part of the construction meetings as soon as we approve them, so.
And so, and, and are we all brand-new equipment in that kitchen?
Yes. Equipment will be brand-new, I mean, we maybe, we're using some pots and pans and that type of stuff, but the equipment will all be brand-new.
Heavy equipment.
Yes.
Freezers and like.
Yes, we'll give them a walk-in freezer and cooler.
Jared, where's the Culinary Depot from? Do we know?
Um, they are actually out of, they have a couple different locations. I think their main location is New York.
Okay.
Um, but they, the representative will be coming to us from, um, Bucks County.
Okay. Questions, comments, or discussion on this one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
7.5, transportation contract addendum, based on the recommendation of the grounds of transportation committed, the board approves a contract addendum for student transportation of America as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Jared, you wanna explain what we're doing there, please?
Yes, um, we currently have a contract in place through the rest of this year for, with Student Transportation of America, um, based on the approval of the board at the last meeting, to continue to contract with, um, Student Transportation of America for the next five years. This addendum is just basically what is an addendum to the contract in place now, so it's not a, a full contract, it's not a 20-page document, it's a two-page document, just updating the items that are changing as part of this, mainly the term of the contract, um, the pricing, and then a couple other smaller items, including, um, what's new to this is setting a minimum payment to STA for 171 days. If we go below that, we would be responsible for 50% of the daily rate. Um, that is something that is new to Indiana, but is not, it, it's becoming, um, kind of a normal part of transportation contracts post-COVID. It's just them asking to be, continue to be paid for expenses that they incur regardless of whether or not we are actually transporting kids.
Okay. Questions, comments, or discussion on, from the board? All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Julia, finance.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We did not have a committee meeting tonight, but we did sort of have a little bit of a spirited discussion at, about your meeting, academic, the last, Sue's meeting. So, for our next meeting, I'm hoping we will see Jared, um, kind of a refor, uh, restructured capital projects list, because it seems that some committees are putting number one willy-nilly, changing things up to number ones. There's one, two, and three. I won't name the committee that does that, but.
You're on the committee, you were there.
What? Oh, that's right.
Good call, Tom.
But I wasn't four.
Okay.
So, we're gonna restructure that list so that we get some more, more disciplined, and we have some real criterion for, criteria for how we place number one, and we'll discuss that at audit. And so, if you, if you have some ideas about how you would like to see those put on the list for one, two, and three, say so, because I have certainly some ideas about it, um, not the least of which is how, we've had stuff on that list forever, and we're never gonna get it done, because we don't have the manpower necessarily, or the funds, or whatever the problem is. So, we have to be careful and disciplined about that list, so we don't overspend, because we don't have the ESR funds, um, coming in anymore. So, um, things that we would like to have and will be great to have are very nice, but they may not be able to make a number one for various reasons, and we're gonna look at those carefully. So, I'd like to review everybody who puts a number one on the list, so that we can go back over it a second time to be sure we don't make a mistake, because in tight environments, mistakes are more costly than usual.
Okay.
Okay, Jared, so you'll have that prepared?
Yes, well, actually, first review will be a billings.
At the same time, oh, really?
Billings and grounds, actually.
Okay, well, I'll be there. Okay, thank you. So, we have some, uh, I move that we approve the current, the current bills be approved as submitted.
Second.
Jared, I saw nothing unusual?
No.
Anybody have any questions on the current bills? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
8.3, that based on the recommendation of the administration, the board approves the listings of real estate taxes that have been made in the following amounts. Armstrong Township, $155,691.56. Indiana, Indiana Borough, $286,780.78. Shalopta, $7,495.57. White Township, $539,332.95, for a total of $989,386.
I have a second?
Second.
Wait, second, um, on the, um.
Yeah, we all saw that, yeah, we all saw that list that came out earlier, so we're familiar with these numbers, and they've held pretty steady. We don't like, delinquency can be looked at two ways. We're not charging enough, because the delinquency is low, well, we're not, so it's a double charge, but it's held steady, and let's hope we collect, because it is good for the loan.
Yeah, it's a, it's consistent within $25,000 of where we were last year. As a percentage, it's right within the 3.4, 3.5%. So.
There's a thing in the banking industry, if you have, if you don't have enough liquidities, you're not making enough loans, so you have to get your lenders to ramp it up, because you want to hit a target, so I think we're okay with that.
Okay, questions, comments, or further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I say aye.
Yep. Next one.
Oh, no, do I start another? Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong, I, I moved that the purchase of 19 networking switches with a five-year license plan from Link Computer Corporation in Bellwood, PA, a cost of $81,554, be approved, but 60% of the cost being funded through the federal something, what's that say, D-rate?
D-rate.
Program, and the remainder coming from the technology budget.
Second.
Moved in second.
This typically would be a buildings and grounds thing, but this is more about a finance thing that we, uh, we bring into, anytime we use federal funds, we need more approval.
Further questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I move that based on the recommendation of the administration, the board approves the partnership with Strategy Solutions, Inc., for the purpose of information gathering and community engagement in the process of exploring options for the repurposing of the Horseman Building as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on this particular item? Very good presentation earlier. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to the closing. Um, Mr. Steve had requested a couple of discussion items, um, he's not here tonight, so we'll defer those, uh, to a, a later, a later date, um, but he did, he is, one of the more interesting things he wanted to, to bring up, and again, we'll let him make the case, is potential renaming of one of the elementary buildings. Obviously, this is something that will need to go to the, through the committee process, um, um, to, to take a, a very good look at how that might actually be accomplished.
We, we looked at naming rights, um, in the policies, but I'm not sure that we ever came to any conclusions on naming across the board, so we might wanna take a look at those policies, um, that, that particular policy.
Correct. I mean, that's why, again, Tom, that's, my point is that it's gonna take a little deeper dive than a discussion, because it'll have to go to buildings and grounds, academic.
Audit and finance.
Audit and finance, uh, because if we do change names, there may be some costs, might have to go past Mr. Ray Pack, um, if there's any legal restrictions on, on how buildings are named, uh, I seem to recall that there was some, some time ago, but I don't know what the current, current status is, so it's, 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 it's gonna be a fairly in-depth conversation to, to try to figure that out. Okay? Um, is there any comment, uh, on, public comment on agenda items? Nothing seen or heard. Uh, we had some enclosures. Juan, do you wanna cover the executive session for us?
Um, yeah, most of it was, uh, to discuss personnel, uh, staffing that we discussed here on the agenda itself.
Okay.
And I will update, uh, one comment, Mr. President, just on the strategic solutions, uh, one of the things that I think Dr. Riggs actually pulled this out as well, that it's not tied to a sale. It's not like a real estate agreement where they have to sell to get the costs, and, uh, I'm glad they didn't, because again, we can't, we can't make that determination until that 90-day cooling.
Correct.
And so, yeah, um, it was nicely set up in the capacity that doesn't matter what the board decides, you know, it's not tied to this agreement itself, so just to keep in mind, we can't make any decision in that time period.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Um, so our next board meeting will be March 25th at 7:00 PM to discuss general purposes. Uh, we have an outreach committee on the 18th, Buildings and Grounds and Transportation also on the 18th, and Audit and Finance on the 25th prior to the regular board meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, your adjourn. Thank you, Mike.
Tom, how did she sail on the world?